See we brought the proper footwear.
Yeah, I did too. You're too funny. I was thinking of that as soon as I was walking down, I'm like, oh gee. I can dip my feet in the lake. Okay, hold on, let me get a hold of that.
So just for your information, this whole area is considered the Rogers Brook Association Beach. That's the needed right-of-way access for all the camps that are up the road. Goes all the way out to the water and then cuts across where the little cove is, you see the cove right here? It cuts across and then goes back up. My property's the one over with the little red shed on the other side. So the brook comes in through here. In fact, when we walk over, you'll see the brook. First neighbor had, their bridge crosses the brook and then the second, second neighbor. Second bridge is right here.
Oh wow, okay. Oh, I see. May I walk on that for a minute? No, yes? Yeah, alrighty.
At your own risk.
Well, hey. Okay. Okay.
That was the first I heard that one.
And you see there's, I put a stick where I want the bridge to land, that's just on the very corner of the property. And basically we just use this little path and have the bridge just land right on this side of the beach. So it's, like I said during the meeting, it's roughly about fifty feet. It doesn't look like fifty feet, but it, I measured it.
Okay.
It's about a fifty, you know, five, ten-foot sections would comprise the fifty feet. And so, anything else, I would say, like, like I said, the brook comes in past these two houses with their two bridges. And then, um, basically goes out that small channel over to the right. And then in the, um, in the winter, the brook is only three or four feet wide.
This section here?
Right in here, it's about three or four feet wide when they drain the lake.
Yep.
So, you know.
Did we ever find out where this comes in from?
We'll walk right past it.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were on the map.
Yeah, it was.
Iffy.
The map isn't very accurate.
Right. Does it stay a shallow?
Um, yes, yes. Shallow to me, anyway.
Where that?
Is that the white stake?
Yeah, the white stake.
Kind of to the right of the little tree.
I think we're getting to a weight load here.
Yeah, especially with me up on this m-.
Well, this is alright, it's just a little.
He was gonna keep his arch anywhere.
Yeah, but I mean, how many people?
They're gonna come.
Come from up there.
Right.
No one, because they can't get under that thing.
Right, and they really can't, I mean.
Well, they probably can't get under this one either.
No, he can't, he'd have to lay way back.
No, you can't get underneath this.
No.
Not conveniently.
Right.
So he's actually being nice.
He could crawl under it.
Right.
He's actually trying to be nice to just let him get to this point by having that arch.
Yeah, but nobody's gonna come in here because they'll just be between two bridges.
Right.
Unless it's the neighbor herself, because she's got her boat right there, she probably shoves her boat right there.
Yeah, why wouldn't she, uh, he, look at that, he go off and throw it to me. See that front thing?
That's her property.
Oh, is it hers?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's the brown one. Yeah, I think the owner of this one's here.
No, she's not here, it's just the.
Well, it's hard to know if this is, is this a brook right here or not.
He says, we're gonna walk by it when we go to his property.
Okay.
Because remember there was a question of where it drained from? That concrete is rather like on your property.
Yeah, that's part of the plant, right? That would have been a beautiful place.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that's not my question.
There's a little access here.
Right, one up here.
Then you have this, uh.
Circled around to that.
Yeah, so it, yeah, it's like, it's like.
Would you measure the exact distance from that corner of the property?
Yeah, it's fifty feet.
Fifty?
Yeah. Okay, so let me know when you're ready and you can make the trek to the other side.
Should we go to the other side?
We can sit out here and look in the summer.
You don't need your umbrella, correct?
Right, huh?
It's raining.
So last night, I took my kayak in, after sundown.
Good sand in here. Yeah, because they come up, they come out of horn ponds.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is a twenty-five foot right-of-way.
I remember years and years and years ago, I, I went on this beach.
Oh, really?
Years and years and years ago.
A lot of people have been to this beach.
You know what I mean? I didn't know it was private then.
Well, this association, um, the woman who owned all of this land sold it to the association.
Oh, okay.
Back in the early nineties.
Alrighty, yeah, it was about that time.
And they created this, uh, right-of-way.
Yep.
But it does, the land is technically goes across the, across the pond over there, the cove. It's very strange, there's, there's a deeded right, there's a deeded access to a beach on the other side.
Yep.
That when she sold the property, she really didn't tell the people who were buying it that we all have deeded access.
Oh, okay.
So now they own land, they, they own land that twenty cottages have access to.
Oh, okay.
And they're trying to fight it.
Well.
Even though we, people have been using it for forty years. But, you know what happens, it's, some of the parents, the parents sold them this place and these people are not their parents.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, you can feed on the way over.
Is that a, is that a?
Drain pipe?
Okay, yeah.
I don't know where that's coming from.
I'm just curious.
It's coming from that camp right there.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So shouldn't you go in there?
You'd think they would end it, end it before, before laying it in there.
Oh, there's another drain.
Well, this one, she said it's, it's extra pressure from some neighbors' well, I guess, but. No, no, not anymore, it's really stretched in too. It's like blown in. Right, most of it looks like that, where it's kind of a little hole in the middle.
Wow, look at this, tears. Holy. Wow.
That's kinda nifty, I like winch that thing up in the winter.
I know, but even still, ooh. Wow. Groceries and stuff. Or an eighteen-month-old baby. Ooh, it's spongy here.
Yeah, I think, I got the deck out.
Everybody will get you an argument.
Property line goes here. I've got a pretty new survey, so, but there's the, uh, you see the little slot cut out in the bushes that, that's a good way to judge where it lands.
Well, the property drops to the high water mark, that's what a lot of them don't understand, they say, no, you don't own the water.
Right, I've been trying to tell people you don't own the water for a long time. There's a guy over here, he's got a swimming line out there, you know, with the floats. And he just, it's like he, like he thinks he owns that whole piece of water and it doesn't bother me because it's way over to the left, but I think it bothers some people.
Oh, I'm sure.
Because they're trying to get in and out their boats and whatnot and it's these floats and.
Property line does not extend over the water.
So that walk we just did, so for me to get over there, that's the walk out.
Yeah.
And that, that's the main.
Or you can wade in.
Yeah.
Right? Right?
Yeah, the water's only that deep, but that mud's probably.
Yeah, you squish, yeah, I hear ya.
This really sucks, it, you are. It's amazing, because it's been dry weather, I'm almost joking.
Spongy.
Did you guys get a lot of rain up here?
Yeah.
Muchly needed.
Oh, yeah.
Gardens are.
That's the one I keep up with, my garden, I belong.
So the neighbor here, I don't know what the rules are, but he just bushwhacked this whole thing.
Or I call it tea berry.
At first, he wasn't too crazy about the idea of the bridge because he thought it would hide his view. Which is kinda silly because it sits so low. So he came up, within the days of the meetings, he decided to level the whole thing. To make his point, I guess. So I used to have some nice privacy right here with all these bridges, they were like twelve feet high. We really had nice privacy between the cottages and now that's gone.
Yeah, that would have been nice.
So if my bridge fans him, well now I can see that bridge, it's offending my view over there. I'm kidding, but.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
What, what is the rule? Like, you can't do that, you can't do any of that. Is it like a inch diameter or something?
No, you're right.
That's erosion stuff, right?
Texan's erosion. Anyway, so that's, that's the whole of it. If there are any other, if there's any other questions at all.
Your major reason?
Said he's gonna build it through the rocks.
Yeah, there's a little bag here in this thing.
No, I'd like to make it a curious, because he says it's gonna be.
High enough erosion? To the area, um, rather than taking something in and out every year. The big motivation here is that walk we just took is the only way to get. To where the dock is and where the beach is and where my boat is. And so if you get family and whatnot, you gotta haul all this stuff all the way down that road and all the way down that path.
So good that they used to make gum out of it.
I remember.
Didn't last long, that big.
The other thing is, that argument I just had with these people, they're making a fuss about.
Flavor only lasts thirty seconds, right?
Passpassing signs and so, I was sold this, uh, basically on the premise that it was deeded access and we had both the access and the beach to go to. And suddenly that's, they're fighting, they're calling the sheriff on us if we use that, their sign.
So there's a right-of-way over here?
There's a path, uh, that was a right-of-way like thirty, forty years ago and, uh, that.
Do you have a deed for that?
The right-of-way, there's no, there's no deed that has that right-of-way. So, it was forty years ago, but it's been used for forty years. So there is precedent, but, so, so I'm having that sort of shut down on me potentially. And now the only way I can get out there is to walk, you know, half a mile around the corner, so that's what sort of prompted me to, uh, to do this, it would just be so much more convenient.
Yeah, right between that break.
Especially since the way you get your boat is you bring it over. Hardship. Oh, it is a hardship, it's, try bringing a two-year-old that way, with all this stuff.
Well, it's coming back with the wind that was causing push.
Well, considering the way it is, it's pretty much a useless thing except for floating in and out, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's sufficient for minnows.
Yeah, but you catch a lot of minnows in here.
Lot of frogs. Lot of frogs.
Lot, a lot of bait stuff.
Yeah, those things all day.
Oh, gosh, the noise, the noise these things make, and they go back and forth and.
I've got a neighbor with a little pond and those people.
Oh, yeah. You look forward to it though, right? Yeah.
No, I sit out there in my fireplace and I can hear the band playing on this road.
They do scream, don't they?
Oh, yeah, well, none of that is, I live in North Carolina, never been down there, no.
Oh, did she walk a queen?
They.
They usually follow, they, huh? Oh, really? I thought they always followed the queen, so she got loose.
Something happened to the queen.
Uh, so she needs to have another queen, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I've never done it, but that's kinda what I've been told. Try, be trying to get one as quick as possible.
Yeah, we get a whole symphony on the high. Alright, because we get the big ones making their sounds and medium-sized ones and the little ones.
There's no other inlet here?
Nah, somebody told me frogs don't sleep, and I believe it.
Yeah, I do too.
That kinda, that kinda puts me to sleep at night.
Yeah. It's a hardship to take care of the house.
Yeah.
Sold by the Realtor and it really, if you read all the documentation, uh, it seemed clean. This was my way to the beach and also Jack, my neighbor in the back there, uses it.
So who owns the property?
Technically, these people own it and their parents, who are gone now, uh, used to be part of the association. Their daughter inherited the place. They did all this research and said, you can't use this, there's no, there was a deeded right-of-way like forty years ago. But it's not in anybody's deeds now.
Kinda got lost in the paperwork so much.
But the beach itself, there's twenty cottages that have deeded access. So, actually they did all the research. Now I'm stuck, you know, when I had this, it's not private.
I'm doing the same thing with my grandpa's, my mother's property and my old, uh, town.
Yeah.
You know, well, I'm gonna buy it, I'm gonna build it. Anybody who's on, you ever said I didn't have people on the property, I deeded right-of-way, too.
This is a nice beach. This is a nice beach. This is a beautiful beach. This is a beautiful beach. Right?
Yeah, we just got this down, yeah. Yeah, so, this is what I was telling somebody, was that, when they, when they sold these people this land, this deeded access was already in place and they really didn't realize that at the time. So now there's probably twenty cottages, I don't know if it's twenty Jack or something like that, fifteen, twenty cottages that have deeded access to this whole thing and half of it's on there, a little less than half of, uh, that is part of their property. So technically we have the right to be on this piece of land, we just have a hard time getting there because no one's got the deeded access.
That's the little, little part right there.
Yeah, that little part, yeah, so I mean, if, I wanna ask for another bridge permit. But, you know, if you made a little jump right here, then you're on the land and it's fine. But, um, they're fighting it and I don't see what, they don't get about it.
Very much, yeah.
No. No, they're claiming people don't have the right to use this anymore and they're not even part of the association anymore anyway, so, um, so, you know? That was again, motivation is the, for the reason that I wanted to put the other bridge in was the complexities are going on, going on over here. Especially since when I bought the place, the Realtor, everybody, there was even signs up here, Rogers Brook Association rules. So I assumed that that was the case, but, anyway, that's a little off-topic, but part of it, it's some of it.
All right, stuff like those deeded right-of-ways, you know, because I was looking for a house up here and every place I found, even if it wasn't on the water, there was always a deed to access to the water.
A lot of these guys were smart, they, they would put these right-of-ways in so that you could build way up on the hill and, and I offer that as, you know, being able to take advantage of the waterfront.
Yeah, I think it's part of the main state attitude that everybody should have access to information.
Right, yeah.
Bounty, so, put in the right-of-ways.
You see some of the lots, right, they're diced up, chink, 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 and then a right-of-way.
Yeah, it's like the ones on Loon Pond, they're all fifty feet except for one, it's forty, to allow that ten-foot spot for a right-of-way.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's interesting, this, if you look at the old pictures, all that sand you see over there is a giant doom, like a fifteen-foot, twenty-foot doom. And apparently there was a storm, Jack, tell me if I got it right, it knocked trees down and all of horn, lady owned all this stuff, she bulldozed it all and flattened beach out. And created that beach. Can't do that anymore.
Nice and sandy beach, too. Nice, nice beach. This is nice and sandy here, too.
Oh, yeah, my property, it's like the garbage folder. I get all the plastic bags, I get all the stuff, I, I pick it all up, but at least, at least I get picked up that one. So this channel is, like I said, it's only about four feet deep when it goes through, and then in the, in the winter, you can walk out to my boat.
Mm-hmm.
It goes out that much, so it becomes, it really becomes a trickle. How much do they drop this lake? How many, how many feet, Jack, you think they dropped the lake?
Two feet.
Oh, it's three feet.
Two feet, yeah.
That boat would be high and dry, it goes way up there, I mean, that's, that's probably only up to your knees, maybe, this first boat. Right now.
Five thirty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
We, we start at six o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Back at the.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I've got enough time to make it back.
Yeah, I gotta set up.
So, anyway, pretty, it's pretty straightforward, I mean, you know, I think you can see the reason why, it was trying to get a bit easier access. And who knows when this will, this situation over here will settle out, uh, it may drag on forever.
Yeah. Just a little bit in, it's a corner, and you can see.
The only way they would let us use this, it would be under like some conditional use, where we'd have to sign our lives away, and they could take it away at any time, and.
Right.
The proof is in the pot plan and the research that was done, that, you know, should out write here, but it might take years before that gets figured out. Quickly turned it from a place of where I come to relax to.
Yeah.
All the stress.
Yeah, mm-hmm, I hear ya.
Anyhow. Any other questions?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Be back at the ranch?
Yeah. Okay. Alrighty.
You posted them out, too.
Right.
I think a, if we just frog lure something, it'd be a good idea.
A mouse.
What do you think, mouse?
Should we take a picture of that?
Little water.
Commonwealth a mess, it'll be bad. What go, will bass go after a mouse?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah? I used to fish, uh, pike with mice.
Yeah, brood trout. I get, use mice now, too. Yeah.
I, I do have a mouse lure, but it's very successful with piping, it's about three years, yeah.
Yeah, mine, it's easy to skim it across the lake, mate.
Right, yeah, I think that's, that's not.
New York.
Yeah, they're from New York and Massachusetts, it's, uh, two couples that split the place.
That's a good look.
Yeah, they're, well, their father would be rolling over in his grave, cause he enjoyed letting people use it.
Right.
He, he was the president of the association and, and made, uh, the wherewithal to put those stairs in, so people could have.
Right.
Yeah, I put a stick there so I could see.
What a shame.
Hopefully it all gets figured out.
What a shame. Wow.
Yeah. Happy you had to be reasonable and accommodating that weekend, um. I can see where they're coming from, because they, I think they realized when, when the project was, uh. Needed green beach, it's part of their, uh, their way. There's a way to get along, you're second, you know, you promise to keep the place nice and, you know, you don't do anything stupid and, you know. People have been using it for forty years, I don't have any problem.
I can ta, turn my camera off now.
I think so.
Okay.